I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Volco, I'm the district barrier, Dave Campbell.
Here.
Jim Fowley, Larry Seer, Mark Severs.
Here.
Phil Wilson.
Here.
Ian Shade.
Here.
Mr. President, I would like to motion that we move into executive session to discuss the personnel issue.
Second in line here. Take your money.
The motions been made and properly sectioned? We're waiting to consult the powers that be to make sure that we... So, all those in favor of moving to executive session to discuss the personnel issue? Volco, please. Dave Campbell.
Yes.
Jim Fowley.
Yes.
Larry Seer.
Yes.
Mark Severs.
Yes.
Phil Wilson.
Yes.
Ian Shade.
Yes.
Now that everyone got settled, we will have to ask everyone to leave for a set... I'm sorry, Jim.
I don't know why this is going on. I'm going to have to hang tight.
Yeah. At this time, we'd like to open it up for any public comments. Lots of people here tonight, so I'm assuming someone wants to say something. Thanks, Brandon.
You're welcome.
All right, at this time, I want to make the motion that we terminate the borough manager.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Public comment.
I guess I'll have to ask a question.
You may certainly ask a question.
Thank you. Why? That's a short question.
Long.
Long. So, I got done.
Yeah, it's a personnel issue, which really is probably...
Yeah, there's just been several personnel issues that have compiled. It's just been a constant concern among the consensus.
If I may?
Absolutely.
There are no other means available to fix the situation?
I don't believe that council thinks there is.
I'm sorry?
I do not believe that council feels that there is. Any other comments? Okay, at this time, we will take a roll call. Steve Campbell.
Yes.
Jim Fowley.
No.
Larry Seer.
Yes.
Mark Severs.
Yes.
Phil Wilson.
Yes.
Ian Shade.
No.
Everyone, it's been a pleasure serving you as borough manager. Anybody else have any questions on anything? You can send me around tab.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, okay, yeah. You will have to fill in where we need to fill in. At this time, we can have the hearing of persons present, and I believe Mr. Remig and Willard and...
Is it possible?
Yes, that's turned it down a little.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Four people on here, so I wasn't sure who was here today.
I'll just stand here, that's the best place to stand. So, we're going to walk through this, looks like this handout, it's not in these arms though, or whatever color this is.
It looks like it is.
Should be in your packet.
This is what he's talking about.
Yep. Okay, so I'm Zach Williers from PFM, we're your independent financial advisor. With me is Jens Domgard from Eckhart Siemens, your bond counsel. This has been on your radar screen, I think, for about two months. You know, we're going to go through this again, I think some of you've heard it in detail, some of you haven't. But essentially, we're talking about refinancing some of your debt for interest rate savings, so this is all good news, okay? Interest rates have been on a pretty hefty decline since about Thanksgiving, all right? And that's what's creating this opportunity.
We're sorry.
No, it's okay.
I apologize.
I'm sorry. Just tell me when you're ready.
A little discommoded.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah.
Okay, try again.
Okay.
We got you, the year has gone down, so...
Bottom line, this is all good news, we're going to save some money, okay? That's what we're talking about. So, there's two action items for tonight that we're kind of hoping for a decision on. One is the minimum of amount of money that we want to save when we do this transaction, okay? And I think that was discussed in finance committee previously, all right? And the second item is, we either want to do an ordinance at your next scheduled meeting, which I think is June 10th, or we can potentially do it sooner at your next finance committee, which I believe is May 23rd. And we'll tell you why you might want to do it sooner, okay? So, those are the things we're going to go through here as we open this handout up. If you flip to the first page, and feel free to chime in with questions as I talk here. So, if you go to the first page, this is an interest rate chart. If you just look at the bottom portion of the page, you can see, you know, the spike, kind of the high point of the interest rates was last, was right around Thanksgiving. Okay, since then, rates have come down, all right? So, anything you see about trade problems and the market, stock market going down, that's actually all good news for the refinancing, that lowers interest rates, okay? So, rates have been down basically a percent since Thanksgiving. Last Thanksgiving, this opportunity did not exist, you could not have refinanced your debt and saved money because the debt we're talking about already has low interest rates. So, this is a window that may exist for a while, it may go away, so that's kind of why we're here to keep everything moving. Now, a lot of the legwork for this hasn't been done already, as far as paperwork and things like that. So, you know, we're about two or three weeks away from being able to lock in interest rates and kind of complete this transaction, assuming we want to move forward, okay? If you flip to pages two and three, now, I'm not going to go through all this, it's a lot of bullets, I think you've seen this before in handouts that you've gotten. But essentially, the bonds that we're talking about are your 2012 bonds, all right? Which have interest rates that range from a 2.375 to a 3.25, all right? So, those are the old fixed interest rates. And then also, your 2010 B bonds, which were issued as taxable debt, and you receive a federal subsidy for those. Those interest rates range from a 3.97 to a 7%, okay? So, we're going to take, again, take the old debt, take those interest rates, replace them with today's new low rates. Any questions about those bullet point pages? You got a roomful of people, so I'm not going to go through all that, okay? The next two pages, pages four and five, are your existing debt. Page four shows how the market views your debt, kind of in these different series of bonds, which is columns two through six, all right? So, the debt that we're talking about is columns two and column three, that's what we're going to refinance. We're not going to stretch it out or make it longer, we're just going to keep the same term and replace the rates. If you look on page five, this is how the borough views its debt, okay? So, it's those same bond issues, but cut up into the different funds that pay for them, all right? So, most of your debt is in columns five through nine, which is your wastewater treatment fund, all right? So, that's paid for out of revenues that you receive back. And then, you know, you have a little bit of general fund debt in columns two and three, and then your collection debt in columns 10 through 12. So, this, this kind of helps when you're doing the budget, these are kind of how you break out the numbers differently. Okay, so that's the purpose of this page. All right, so the meat of why we're here is to talk about page six. So, page six shows two different scenarios on saving this money, okay? So, if you look in the blue, option one, this is if we refinance the debt that we talked about, and you take all of the savings, if you look in column five, and take all of the savings in the next, or actually, the current budget here, okay? So, you can see, you save about $320,000. Every year after that, you save a few thousand dollars. And then, at the bottom, you can see the total savings of about $362,000, okay? If we did this today, savings would be higher than this. This had a little bit of cushion built in because we're still two weeks away from being able to actually execute this, all right? If you look in the red, columns two and seven, same structure, except for instead of taking all the savings in your kind of next budget year, the upfront budget year, here, you're taking savings in column seven, you can see, over the life of the debt. So, every year, going forward, you're going to budget over $20,000 to $25,000 less than what you have currently, okay? So, it's kind of a recurring savings. I think when we discussed this before, you know, that was possibly a preferable option. There's really no right or wrong answer, the point is to make the best use of the money for the borough, all right? So, a lot of times, if you take upfront savings, you may have like a one-time project that you wanted to take care of this budget year, something like that. Reason for column seven would be, you know, to have recurring savings to make it simple for budgeting going forward. It makes room, you know, for the next almost 20 years, over 20 years. So, you know, deciding on which way you think would be beneficial would be helpful for us as we move forward. And then also, when you look at the two savings dollar amounts, you know, again, we want to set a minimum. The point of the minimum is that, you know, as we kind of gear up for the final steps here over the next few weeks, when we go out to get a credit rating, or we haven't done that yet, that we want to know, as long as the market is going to save you at least $300,000, that we should continue forward, or whatever that number is. You don't want to set that number too low, you don't want to set it 50,000 because then it's a lot of work for not a lot of savings. You don't want to set it too high, you set it for 500,000 right now, well, we're not even at 500,000. So, there's a chance that you would never do this transaction if that was the minimum savings. So, there's kind of a fine balance to where you set that number. Historically, in PA, somewhere between 2% and 3% is fairly common for this type of transaction. 3% in this case would be about 300,000. I'm going to pause there and see what questions or thoughts you have.
Okay, I got questions.
Sure.
So, you know, I mean, if the rates move lower, then, I mean, to me, that's a relative weighting, but I mean, if the inflation rate rises, I mean, I think that gives us more of a better option, which right now, I don't foresee it. But having said that, since Trump implemented tariffs, that could weigh where maybe the feds will start moving the rate, maybe higher, I mean, what's your take on that?
Well, so again, today was a mess in the market.
Yeah.
Trying to retaliate it. So, again, that was good news for this, bad for 401Ks and things like that. This interest rates that we follow here went down by .05 or five basis points, all right? You know, that equates to probably about another $50,000 of savings, or something like that. So, you know, we only know where interest rates are now, you know? When you go back to that chart, it didn't take long to go down 1%. It won't take real long to go up, I don't want to say 1%, but something. You know, this can move away from you just as quickly as it showed up. So, you just have to, again, kind of cut that fine balance of, we want to save enough money that this is beneficial, you know, and if 300,000 or 200,000 is beneficial to your budget, that's kind of the, you know, the question. And the balance between not setting it too high. Now, the goal, again, this is a minimum, the goal is going to be, we're going to save as much as we can save based on the market. So, again, right now, if we did this, we'd be well above 300, you know, we'd be a good bit north of that. So, again, keep in mind, it's a minimum, it's just to kind of keep us moving without having to constantly come back to council and say, here's where the market is, would you like us to do this, here's where the market is? And Jens is going to talk a little bit about his ordinance in a second. The ordinance allows us the flexibility to do the transaction, not on a regularly scheduled meeting night, like tonight, but when the market works. So, that scenario is, you set it at 200 or 300,000, the market moves away from us and no longer saves money enough to do it. We would monitor it, you know, into the summer and into the fall, and let's say, in the fall, we have some other event, or interest rates drop, we would then be ready to go, kind of with a two weeks notice, to then hop back out into the market and move through this, instead of starting a whole 10-week process over again. So, again, Jens will talk about that part of the ordinance, but that's the general gist of this. The way you do these now, since the collapse back in '08, is you need to be flexible, and you don't want to be tied to a regular council meeting date in order to price a transaction, because if that's not the right day, you know, to be in the market, you don't want to do it.
Yeah, if I heard you right on the market, then they would say, they don't anticipate the Fed really giving the mortgage rate for a while, lower rate than ever.
And the one thing you have to remember is, when we talk about the Fed and the overnight rate, that's the short-term overnight rate, you know, here, we're talking about kind of 20-year debt. So, it's not, it's, in theory, it's supposed to move with each other, you know? Recently, that doesn't necessarily isn't what happens. I mean, right now, we have a slightly inverted yield curve, for the short end of the yield curve is a little bit higher than the five-year part of the yield curve, which is abnormal. So, all the economic theories can get thrown out pretty quickly.
I mean, personally, I'm kind of reluctant to lock in anything right now, and just kind of wait a little bit, see where it's all...
But, and that's fine.
Don't you agree with that?
Well, I think, I think we've got to go back to the whole wait-and-see approach. I mean, you can still move forward with kind of this part of it and the ordinance at your next meeting. Again, that gets us to within two weeks of being able to do something. If you, you know, kind of bag all this, and then we come back in October, that's fine, you just have to start the 10-week process over again. So, it just leaves you less flexible, you just have to be willing to take that chance that you may never hit this 300,000 back, if, you know, if interest rates go away. I mean, I think that, you know, if tomorrow, there was a resolution to the trade situation, that would likely, if you asked anybody who follows this, you'd think it would make interest rates go up. It could probably do the opposite too, but that, you know, that would be the kind of market consensus.
Of course, tariffs don't go in place of the person you're in the mic, correct?
Yeah, that was what, what they said.
That's what they're saying, okay.
We usually try not to predict interest rates as much as tell you where interest rates are today. I think that's kind of how we like to play it. Predicting interest rates is a pretty dangerous game, as you can see on that, that chart back on page one.
If you're predicting interest rates, maybe you and I should have a meeting.
Well, I'd be retired if I decided where the rate would be a month from now. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yeah.
Any other questions about that? So, do you want to talk about setting a minimum that would be part of the ordinance? That would be, you know, two weeks from now or a month from now, or... And again, I'd use the 300,000 because that's what I was told was discussed, I mean, it can be higher. If you want to get to 350, and again, we'll shoot for 600, but as long as it's at least 350, that's what we'll, you know, kind of move forward with.
At least the...
What's everybody else think? 350 as a minimum, or... And again, this is net of costs.
Right.
It's net of the federal subsidy that you receive on the old debt, because that's going to go away. So, we have to net that out to make sure that this is a real, true net savings. Again, it's your number, we just want you to pick something that's meaningful to the budget.
Mark, you're the chairman of finance, I think this council relies on your opinion heavily.
I mean, anywhere between 350 and 375, I'll accommodate.
Okay? Well, we can work to pencil that into the resolution for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And as far as the savings structure, do we like the level more than the upfront, or...
Keep in mind, this is sewer, this is a sewer plant, it's getting the savings. So, you'd only really want the money, basically, you either take the savings over the life, like you would with your home mortgage, or you could actually eliminate, basically eliminate most of the payment in the first year, so all the savings comes in the first year. So, you'd only do that if you thought, because that's just going to result in a surplus in your sewer fund. Also, you'd be passing that off through to your bulk customers, municipal customers too. So, they would realize all that savings in front, if...
To do it all.
If you do it that way.
Right.
Otherwise, everybody shares in the annual reduction, as your agreements would say. But again, keep in mind, this is sewer treated, so not all of this is going to go direct to the borough.
Right. And that's what I said earlier, you know, typically, the upfront is meant for, if you have some project that you can hammer out with the savings. If not, it's definitely more common, I think, for sewer funds to take the savings over the life. You know, that way, the rate payers can benefit over the next, you know, 20 years of people who are using, who are using the asset.
It's easier to explain to your customers, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, so...
That makes a memo option.
Yep. All right, so one more page, and then we're done with my part. So, page seven shows a timeline, all right? This is kind of shifted around, just based on how everything's been moving. Now, the earliest we can lock in rates is the week of June 5th, I'm sorry, the week of June 3rd. Right now, we're targeting June 5th, which is a Wednesday, all right? Now, we've kind of done all the work up to this point that does not incur fee, okay? The next step, assuming that we want to move forward, is to go forward with the credit rating process. And we have to do that, the borough has to get credit rating, you know, expect that to change. You know, once we do that, you know, then we're kind of on our way to getting this transaction finalized. The last action that we need from council is to actually approve the ordinance that Jens is going to talk about, that I keep mentioning. We can do that kind of one of two ways. You can authorize him to advertise tonight at this meeting, he can go back and place the ad, and Jens, if you want to talk about this part, step in. And then, we can potentially have that vote at the finance committee meeting on the 23rd, all right? We figured some of you will already be out here, so not everybody has to get drug out for a special meeting because we know those are a pain.
We have to have a special meeting, and everybody has to be here.
It would have to be advertised as a special meeting.
But I figured some of you would already be out.
And you would need four yes votes, not just the majority of those present.
Or, if we want to wait until your next meeting, which I think is June 10th, that's just a regular meeting, we can do it then. The only reason you'd want to do it as a special meeting is if you're worried that this, you know, may kind of go away, because it is sensitive to interest rates. That would be the reason you could have a special meeting, just so you can lock in interest rates sooner. Yeah, that's, that's a fine answer. That's just easier on everybody.
Yeah.
So, we can shoot for the June regular meeting. Okay? So, I think Jens will kind of take over here and talk about the ordinance, unless you have any other questions about the numbers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm going to give you the mini version. Basically, this ordinance is very much like ordinances that council has passed in the past when it has done bond issues. They're called general obligation laws. Because from a bondholder standpoint, you can pay for it from any source of revenues that the borough has, of course. Because these are, both these series of bonds that you're refinancing were related to the treatment plant, our assumption, of course, is you're going to be paying this new debt service on the same source name of the sewer revenues. So, we will be able to qualify this debt as what's called self-liquidating and not a charge against your ordinary borrowing capacity, because it's not being paid from taxes, it's being paid from sewer revenues. It'll do the same thing as was done in the past. So, in the end, you'll see the number, 11,500,000, it looks like a big number. The reason is, what we're proving here is what we call the parameters or the maximum. The way the law works, it's not just the maximum total size, but you have to, you're proving the maximum principal that could come due in each year. So, you put some cushion in each year for the way the bonds are marketed, and you add, it might be end up with a larger number. But the bottom line is, no bonds are going to be issued, and for no more than required to generate that savings number. So, that's the only real number in here that really means anything, it's the savings target. And that's why Zach was talking about it as long as he did, because that's the number that counts. Now, I use as a plug number 2% only because that's a, that's a typical number, just as a plug number. But I would put in here, instead of a percentage, this would have been 2% of the bonds, the principal amount of bonds being refinanced. And to get rid of that, plug in the number, did you say 350, or?
Yes.
350, okay. So, that number will be now be a minimum of 350. What that does is, when this ordinance is passed, that's the only formal action required of council. After that, then, it'd be the borough administration to oversee communicating with the financial advisor to see when the time is right to strike, to market the bonds, lock in the rates, and achieve at least that number. But again, because of the costs involved, because you don't want a false start in going out to the market, you want to know, you got to know where to come in. So, when we know at least that number, that's when they're going to hit the market. So, no more votes, no more action taken after the June 10th meeting. We would, I will take care of advertising the ordinance as a special type of advertising, the law known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act, it's not advertised on the Borough Code, it's at least three days prior, and then, if it's enacted, then it gets advertised a second time. Again, it's a different process. All that paperwork you get filed... All that paperwork you get filed. This was done in the past for your other financings. So at the end of the day, you'll just basically, like in a mortgage, you would pay off your old debt, replace it with a new debt. The old debt goes off the books, the new debt goes on the books, and that's what you pay. We will be sending out a notice to your, you know, your bulk customers about once we know what the final payment is, so they'll share in the annual, presumably now the annual payments. I don't know. We'll just kind of figure out something, it's not like I couldn't do this, that they're going to save money. Though it's not a big sum each year, but it adds up to a nice number. So that's pretty much the ordinance.
This parameter of ordinance is very similar to what the borough used to have passed. It's worked well. So all's well with you.
So what you're really authorizing is us to advertise the ordinance.
Correct.
Yes.
Is that the actual need in the month?
I believe that's the motion. We need to have one too, Jim. So move. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen for your time and your patience with that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Apologize for any distractions.
Well, you'll see this official statement coming around. Yeah, I'm working on it, so there'll be another version.
All right, great.
Okay.
This is net.
Sorry, I wanted to listen.
Okay. Okay, we're having technical difficulties. Do you guys need this up here?
Um, we have that for everybody in the back. I don't personally have a coffee front either.
No.
Is it an IT or password?
No, just power buzz. I bet you it's this one. It's this one. Hey, woo-hoo!
We either need a quicker or need a quicker.
I can be your quicker for you. Just got to give me a cue.
Cue, okay.
Okay, this is the fire department, and they're going to present reorganization for the Borough of Lewestown, planning and budget meeting for us.
Okay. So recently, in the past six to eight months, we've worked with council to try to reorganize the fire department a little bit. We've put a lot of work, blood, sweat, and tears into this project, and I think we're making pretty good headway. Couple weeks ago, at the finance committee, we presented a PowerPoint presentation, and we were asked to come back tonight to present it to everybody. So some primary coverage, area target characteristics of the fire department. And in the borough, we cover a population of a little bit, there were 8,200 people. It's about 4,103 per square mile, or 3,700 households. Throughout the day, throughout the week, we're just shy of 3,400 people working within the borough. We have three public schools with a population of about 2,000 kids throughout the day, throughout the week. Amongst that, we have a Catholic school, the business school at South Hills, five residential high-rise facilities, three-plus stories, Mifflin County Courthouse and those offices, as well as Route 322 and 22. The fire department characteristics currently consist of three stations with a roster of 86 active members. The average response time for Lewestown Fire Department is four minutes. The national average is six minutes for a paid department. We currently have two tower ladders, which are the trucks with the big buckets on the end, two pumppers, a pumper tanker, a rescue engine, which goes to fires in car accidents, two rescue boats, an air unit, a mini attack truck, a special unit, and a foam and rescue trailer.
Sorry. We better have something to throw at you.
We can find something.
No, you guys quit to say that!
Weird, weird to hear that. So the United Tower truck is over 25 years old, the one at the city is over 25, the United's engine is over 25, the one engine at the Brooklyn's 15, their pumper tankers just shy of five years old, and the rescue at the city is 20. United's characteristics, we show in these pictures, the top left is the air unit, the far right side is their engine, and the bottom left is the tower. The top-left air unit is currently for sale as part of the fire department reducing. The Brooklyn's new pumper tankers in the top left, the rescue boats in the bottom left, their current special units in the bottom right, and their second pumper is in the top right. The one in the top right, as part of reducing the fleet, to save some money, is the one that's currently for sale at the Brooklyn. Then the city, left-hand side is our rescue, the top-right-hand side is our tower truck, which is currently for sale, as part of reducing the fleet, and the bottom right's the mini attack and the rescue boat. So back in the summertime, late fall, we had a consultant come in, John Sepp of York. He was hired through council, through the state. He committed to the study. Anything he asked for, anything we needed, he needed, we provided. After several meetings with the leaders of the fire department, council reps, different board members of different committees, the fire department made an agenda with several internal changes, goals and objectives to provide better service to the community and the borough. Here's what we come up with. At this point, we're going to move forward with a three-model station option for 2019 and 2020. This is one of the consultant's recommendations. For reducing the apparatus, each station selling at least one piece of apparatus to reduce the fleet and try to save some money. The antique apparatus, we're trying to update. Stuff that's 20 years old, 25 years old, stuff that's due for replacement is what our goal is at this point. We've implemented, beginning in September, it's called a joint staffing. And I'll get to that in a second. We're going to specialize each station. United's going to become the truck company. Brooklyn's going to become the engine company, and the city will be the rescue company. Under recommendation of Borough Council, and also the LCB, each station that has a club is separating from the club. We're going to obtain our own separate 501(c)(3)'s. The United Fire Rescue, as I said, will be specialized as a truck company with a Quint style truck. Not specifically a Quint, but a Quint style. I won't get through all the bullet points, but that's the jobs of a truck company operation. Search and rescue, ladders, ventilation. Option A for United will be the Quint. In layman's terms, a Quint is a piece of apparatus that has a big ladder on top, has the tank of water, hose, and a pump. Quick.
Sorry.
Option B is a more straightforward aerial device. This truck can be used for kitchen apartments, Borough departments, Mount Rock, any sort of high-rise facility. People trapped on the fifth, sixth, seventh floor, it'll be used to extricate them during the fire. The end-of-the-day plan for United Station will have one Quint and/or aerial device and one support type vehicle. It'll go from three pieces to two. The Brooklyn Host Company will specialize in the engine company operations field. Again, in layman's terms, the engine company is a piece of apparatus that shows up, tanks a fire hydrant, supplies the water, gets inside and extinguishes the fire. They're very unique with the piece that they currently have, it's also considered a tanker, which carries between 2,000 and 3,000 gallons of water. The end-of-the-day plan at the Brooklyn Host Company is bumper tanker feature that they have, one support vehicle, and a rescue boat. We'll be reducing their fleet as well by selling the one engine. At the city, on the east end of town, does specialize as a rescue company. The rescue company's sort of unique from the rest of the fire department, as we carry rope rescue equipment, vehicle rescue equipment, and water rescue. Stuff ranging from confined space to building collapses, et cetera, et cetera. Anything rescue-related, the city will handle. At the end-of-the-day plan for the city is the one rescue pumper feature, one support vehicle, and a rescue boat. And we do have a foam trailer that sits out back in our station, that's surplus by county foam, for instance, on the highway. So Lewestown Fire Department training, at the beginning of the year, the fire department purchased a training package through Bucks County Community College at $1,200 hours. In a nutshell, what we've done with each station specializing in a different field, we've been sponsoring indoor half-classes scheduled, specializing in engine company operations, truck company, vehicle rescue, water rescue, et cetera, et cetera. We have about 13 or 14 classes scheduled. That goal is, is to take the roster and the membership of the fire department and train these guys in the special fields. Okay? The target date, as I said a while ago, is September the 8th. That's the first day, we have a meeting scheduled that day to implement the joint staffing program. So far, with the classes we've had, just this past weekend and all that severe weather we had, we had 10 people obtain their water rescue certifications in the Juniata River during those storms. So this training package is working. We have more people now specializing in stuff than we did this time last year. With council support, the fire department's reducing the fleet, which will save thousands of dollars with duplicate expenses. Specializing in many ways does not mean any cheaper, like everything else. At the current time, Lewestown Borough Fire Tax is at .92 mils, hasn't raised in about 19 years. Our goal is, working with council, is to increase that fire tax up to about 2.4. And Mark, if you can verify this with us. Mark, grab me that. In accordance with the Pennsylvania General Assembly, Section 81302 on a tax levy, we can look to three mils, or council can look to three mils. We're only looking to do about 2.4. We don't want to tax the bracket, we just need to get to where we need to be to update the antique apparatus.
He's looking at that quick.
Go ahead. I believe that's correct. I'll just double check it.
So here's what we'd like to do. At the United, updating their equipment with the Quint slash aerial truck. We have representatives, me one here tonight, and a few of them up. If you have any question about fire apparatus. So what we'd like to do with the United at this point is a new tower truck replacing their current one that's 25, 26 years old, priced at about 1.4 over a period of 20 years. It's about $85,000 a year. The Brooklyn Pumper Tanker is about $984, at $49,000 for 20 years. The City Rescue Pumper is at $725,000, at about $65,000 for 15 years. By raising the fire tax to 2.4 to the .92 would cover these expenses. That's all we're looking to do, is just make sure the antique apparatus is up to date and replaced. We're not stopping any fundraising, we're not stopping anything we've been doing, but we want to work toward making sure the equipment the guys are on is safe and effective for daily operations. Yep, go ahead.
All right, so, most of you know me, president for United. The Brooklyn and the city figures are, I believe, pretty accurate, because those pieces of apparatus have already been purchased. Ours, on the other hand, our tower has not been. So the consultant, Mr. Seppen, he recommended a Quint. You know, we sat down, talked amongst officers, other people, we've talked with some chiefs, and we're trying to figure out the option between Quint or straight aerial. You know, there's a lot of pros and cons. So the 1.4, we're looking as at a high. Okay? That's because we, you get quotes, we have quotes from different companies. E1 has been working with us as the best, and that's every other piece in the borough, an apparatus isn't E1. So that makes sense. So it's going to depend if you put a pump on it, if you put water on it, if you want to put some hose on it, the price will fluctuate. A straight aerial truck will be cheaper than a Quint, because the Quint, you're adding a lot more pieces of mechanism to the apparatus. So we had Matt come in, and we have paperwork of one that we actually spent, not a demo that we just printed off that they could say, here you go, this is what you're going to get. That's not going to serve us or the residents of the borough of Lewestown at all, to just, like you're going to Subway and you pull a hoagie off the rack. No, you customize it. You want it to work what's best for you guys. So that's what we did with Matt. Matt was the fastest one that could pull something together in the time that was allowed for us to throw this together. We had a short amount of time to try to bring this, because this is something we would like to implement as very soon as we can, because it's our end, we're working quickly, and things are coming together quick and working well for us. So Matt, he's got the paperwork. If you guys would like to see it, he can touch a little more in depth. Do I think the price is on the paperwork for something we?
Yeah, there's two, I have two different handouts I want to hand out. One of those would be as if United Fire Rescue, if you actually purchased it themselves, what the loan would be. Now that, just like the guy talked earlier about rate differences, this is quoted as if we would buy it tonight or no later than, I believe, July. But we wanted to have numbers, so you guys could actually see what the current price would be. So then I also have one, they did also, just to show, pricing's better when like municipalities themselves do it. So we also had them work up a quote as if Lewestown Borough would have the loan themselves. So, if there's 10 there, if I can get those out, I'm sure, that'll be Lewestown, and then, where?
While he's fastidious out, just to let you know, we've been in contact on a regular basis with the consultant, John, running information past him. He's supported everything we've discussed so far here tonight. It was a church conference. Amongst the consultant report, whenever it was released several months ago, one thing that was suggested was that the borough buy a loan or a spare piece of apparatus, in case something would go down. The current rescue at the city will be for sale at the beginning of the year. We're willing to keep it, not sell it, make it become that spare piece of apparatus for the borough, so the borough doesn't have to purchase a spare piece of apparatus. So the financial plan for the fire department increase, go from .92 mils to 2.4. Again, that reflects the General Assembly, the additional tax in conjunction with the current tax, they would have to get it together. We would title it a rolling stock plan for payment purposes only. So when the tax-based funding would come in, we would organize it with the banks. That money would go directly towards those loan payments, and the money will never go through the fire stations. I think on Diana's end of things, we had spoke with Scott at the time, as far as accounting goes for the borough, that would be about the easiest way to do that, if the money never passed through the fire stations. It just come in here and went directly to the banks. That would allow council and the finance committee 100% control of where this money's coming in and going to.
Can I go backwards?
Take it. So currently, each station receives about $24,000 a year. That's $72,000 total. The average total cost per year per property owner is about $80. That's per year. The average person spends about $80 per month on a cell phone bill. In order to cover the need of apparatus expenses for the borough, rather than one station or three, we've subcontracted this tax revenue to the regardless. or three, we've subcontracted this tax revenue off of regardless. In their township, their fire tax is two mils. Their two mils generates $325,000. Their money's split between three stations. Each station receives approximately $108,333,33. Their township pays for the workman's comp from the general budget. It costs the taxpayer about $100 a year for fire protection, knowing when they call 911, somebody's showing up. For every township, a 3.08, and Jim, we got some of these numbers off of you at our last meeting, that generates about $285,000. Two-thirds of that money's split between three stations. A third of that money is placed into the equipment fund. Also, each of their stations receive $5,000 from the EMS tax. Lewistown does. Their township pays for the workman's comp from the general budget, township pays for their vehicle insurance, and it too comes out to about $100 bucks a year, when somebody calls 911, the fire department shows up. So the overall goal in the plan, while we're standing here tonight, will three primary pieces of apparatus, a tower truck, an engine, and a rescue. Will create what's called the rolling stock. The taxes go from .92 to 2.4. Council directly sends the apparatus payment plans in, the fire station don't touch the money.
I'm sorry, I don't think there's anything left.
That's it. Again, we did this presentation, the finance meeting, a couple weeks ago. Mark was present, he asked us to come back tonight with all our information. Anybody have any questions for us?
What would be the increased cost to borough citizens, the difference between .92 and 2.4? Do you have a rough estimate?
I do, that's a good question. We spoke with Scott. It's about $34 a year. So about $3 bucks a month, $3.50 a month, in that general ballpark area.
Because right now, you have the average total cost is about, oh, that's cost, $80. So you're talking, it would increase it to about $105, roughly?
If we go with the 1.4, and the high aspect of things.
Okay.
Did you see any of those numbers before tonight, Mark? I just saw this presentation.
Prior to tonight?
Yes.
Now, last week, Mark had requested a copy of the email. We sent to Scott twice, there was issues there. He also got a copy of the PowerPoint last week, I don't know if it was distributed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So...
Well, yeah, but I mean, there's some general questions I have. So, Diane, do we have all the form 990s in?
No, we haven't the Brooklyn yet. We did get the cities, it's on that consent agenda.
Okay. So, the fire company, or a committee as well, I mean, what, is that, is that something that's met quarterly or monthly, or, I mean, what, or, where have been the discussions on that? Is that, this has been presented?
Everything is coming together.
Yeah, no, this hasn't been presented there yet.
Okay.
It's discussions within those committee meetings that have led up to escalate.
And with us fire departments, just us officers of fire departments too, you know, we get together and we put things together and, you know, we didn't, this has been something we've been, well, Ryan's looked, he's worked a lot harder than I have, but, you know, putting this together, but it's something we've been, we've been striving on even in department-wise with our guys, you know, the training, the staffing, the, I mean, we want to see this happen. I mean, it's going to be good for the borough of Lewistown, in my opinion, and I've been in the borough for almost 20 years.
Okay, gentlemen, I just, I just have some comments. Look, I, I have a very high regard for what you guys do, but more, in the same retro respect, we're talking about consolidation here, and what I'm seeing is, is that you're actually showing a two-year plan, and that's all you're showing. So when we get into the third year, we don't know what we're doing.
We could discuss that as well as in the meeting. I'll go ahead.
Okay. So basically, what you're doing is, it's termed, I think it's called a functional consolidation, where all you're doing is maintaining the three fire companies, and you're just, they're still as separate entities, but with specialized functions. Does that sound about right?
At this point, so...
And it's really not a merger?
Not at this point, because we're held up with the 501(c)(3) separations. It's going to take between 10 and 12 months to do per station. So we reached out to two years, in case that project has packed up a little bit, legalities. What we're focusing on now is updating the apparatus. So, rather it be three stations or one station, speaking with the consultants, these are the three pieces of apparatus that one station needs also. So if the day were to come that the three would go into one, the equipment's already there, and it's already in plan.
So, when John Semps come to, and with this report back in...
January.
Yeah, January to Borough Council, and he stood pretty much where we're standing, and he had this, he had a report. In the report, he had three options, a three-station model, a two-station model, and a one-station model. Okay? So, we looked at the models and said, "Well, none of them are going to happen overnight or at one time." We felt, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, you know, we felt going into this, you know what, the best place to start for us is in-house, staffing training, cross-training, cross-staffing, and the one-station model. We're not going to jump from where we are today into one station in 12 months. Impossible. We know this is, and when Mr. Wellam was here with us, saying, "It's going to take time, we're going to need to take steps." So, we thought, on the fire department end, well, the steps we're going to take, step number one is going to be reducing apparatus, like in option one in here. Getting our guys trained, if they get a call, and I can drive my tower down here, and their tower can't get out on an out-of-town call, or, you know, our tower's out and they need a driver, I'm training to drive their tower to the call, to make sure all our borough equipment gets on the street. There's no sense in their tower sitting there, and we have 12 guys up here, and they have 12 guys down there, and they're struggling for a driver, but I'm more than capable of doing it. So we want to see the borough equipment get on the street. So that's the whole, the cross thing. So option two is two stations. Whether it be one moves to another place, there's three of us, one's moving somewhere. Okay? You alleviate expenses of one house, you pick up, you move your stuff to another house. You know, at that time, you know, we take on cost of the house that you're moved into, still not saving much money, but with the reducing of the apparatus, we're still saving some. So that's going to be the three to four year, am I right? The one to two year was the option one, three to four year was the two. The two year, we feel, would work. With the downsizing of apparatus, the cross-training, we can make it work as one department, Lewistown Fire Department. So we went ahead and we thought, one station. You know, the option three's on there, for one station. Is it possible? It's possible, I mean, a lot, you see it around, but you're looking at a five, six-year plan. I mean, you're not, you know, to put up a building that could house one fire department for the area that we're in, to find the land to do it, to, it's, a central location is what's going to be what's best for the residents. So we're trying to streamline this as much as we can, to make this work for the borough of Lewistown and the residents. So it is, you are seeing steps at a time, but we're following John Semps almost to a tee with some alterations here and there, but it's not the major, of the option plans. We just replace the option with the year.
Yeah, we're following anywhere he sort of has them presented in that.
We're, I guess we're trying to make it easy, you know, it's going to be tough to go from now to...
Yeah, nothing against what you want to do, right? And I agree, it's not going to happen when you're...
Right.
No, right. I just got this, I haven't even had a chance to digest that yet. Thank you for purchasing. But I think we need time to counsel, some people in council need time to digest.
Sure.
We try to figure it out.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and that was, that was one of my concerns, was how much, you know, information was relayed, who knew what, who had what, coming into this, because we don't want to blindside you guys with this. Yeah, that's not our intention.
I commend you for what you're doing. I've stopped it down a long time ago.
I think it's great that they're all working together as an entity.
It's not going to happen in a year.
And not allowing egos and everything else to get, but I commend you on that alone.
Thank you. It's going to take cooperation for everybody, you know, to do this, so, you know, questions anytime, I...
That was going to be my other thing. If anybody on the council has a question, should we reach out to you two?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, it'll be up to council how you want to proceed, if you want to have the fire companies do the leases, or council. If council does it, there are some additional hoops to jump through, you'll have to go through that local government unit debt act like Gens was speaking about.
Okay.
Like that, I just got this up to my board, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I know we have a lot of the agenda tonight, President, I think we should move forward here a little bit.
I would like to do that very much, thank you.
One quick thing on the sales side, we weren't expecting, and I don't think they're expecting you guys to make a decision to buy this tonight, we wanted to provide you as much information as we can, so when you start thinking down the road, the only reason it was important is because that finance company says we have to put up an end date because of the way the market works.
I appreciate that.
But we've got that, all that's for us. I didn't want you to think like, "Oh, they're coming here and saying..."
No, we got you.
I do have specs of the drop, in case you want to see them, I want to set them at the end of the table.
That would be great.
Just saying, there's five sets, there's five sets here, so it's two pages.
And we can keep them?
Yeah, that's true, it's free, that's actually.
You can decide.
So, one more thing, and I'll be done. We did, we did advertise a workshop in the past that the public and the council could show up. We'd be more than happy to do another one when everybody can be here. You know, if it takes a couple days to get it figured out, what happened in the past, you know, we show up at a meeting, there's one guy, two here, and it's, you know, when we sit through meetings on our ends, and then we come here, and then this happens, you know, we're trying to make it easier on our end and your end, if we could knock it out with one big meeting and be done with it, that would be appreciated.
Great.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for counting your lines.
Thank you, guys, great presentation.
Good job, Ryan. Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll let the gentlemen get moved out here, are you staying?
This is the man. Thank you.
Mr. Bocet, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Very well. Here for Vietnam Veterans of America.
That's correct. So, we're not happy...
You got the floor.
Okay, I'm living a lot of my leisure, a lot of people. We are small, I, the President of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 791, we're only a small group, 51 members, about 26 to 30 active. But being that this is 50 years since the Vietnam War, what we are doing is taking on a big, a big task for us. You're all familiar with the Vietnam Memorial Wall down in Washington DC, 58,316 names on it, 160 Medal of Honor winners, eight women, 17 from Mifflin County, five from Giugliata County, and five from Lewistown Borough. What we've decided to do, since they draw 4.4 million people a year, we've decided to access what they call the Vietnam Traveling Wall. It's out of Texas, it's 360 feet long, eight feet high at its apex. This is what it looks like when we put it. What we want to do is, being it's 50 years, we want to bring it to here. Now, just like the Vietnam Wall when it was put up in Washington DC, it was done by all donations. We are a small thing, we are asking for donations too. So I'm coming with my hat off and my hand out, saying, you know, "We'd like you to help us honor our veterans." This will be at the Reevesville Playground. Why will be at Reevesville? We put it at Reevesville because of the access to lighting, the access to being able to drive the veterans' van trucks on the field, and the access to set something this large up. It'll arrive August the 7th, it'll be set up August the 8th, and it'll be tore down after Sunday service on August the 11th and go away to Bangor, Maine. We decided to do this at this time, because that's the same time as the Mifflin County Youth Fair. Figured we could draw back and forth between youth fair and between this product that we're putting on. And like I said, we're a small group, we can't do it by ourselves, we have to go to the communities. We've been going to the VFWs, the legions, clubs, townships, borough, burn a borough, and we're asking, like I say, hat off, hand out. I've made up a little full work here, it tells that we're a 501(c), a little bit about ourselves, and a little bit the cost of the wall. The wall cost us to get it here is, the original outlay was $8,600. We figured we could do it for $12,000. We're at $16,000 right now for lighting, toilets, go-karts to get the handicapped around. This has to be open 24 hours a day. It has to be guarded 24 hours a day. It comes escorted by the state police, and it's set up, and the cost of what we're doing, like I say, the only way we can do it is by asking for the help of the community. This is a community project, we'd like to ask you to help honor the veterans from Mifflin County. Thank you very much.
If I'm going to get a contribution, who would I give it to?
Excuse me? I put it in here, if, we'll take any kind of, any contribution, any amount. It's the Central Pennsylvania, Chapter 791, P.O. Box 91, Burn, Pennsylvania.
I'll get that off there then.
Okay? And this here, this here describes, this part of it describes what we have contracted with AVT, U.P.A. out of Texas, what we have to do to bring the wall here. Like I said, this, this is close to my heart, because I'll say this much to you, to any veteran who served in Vietnam and come home in the '70, '71, '72, we know what the political situation was at the time. This is something that any Vietnam veteran is close to Vietnam veterans' heart, this is like our holy grail.
How close to are your goal?
How close to are your goal? We are at 16,000 right now, but our costs are still going up. We have, we're laying reeves, we're involving, like I say, go-karts, toilets, electricity.
Is your contact information in there, Mr.?
My contact information is, my contact information is in there. I'll leave that with you, I appreciate your time, and, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the opening of the bids for vehicles. Okay, the first bid we have is from Vegas, one, Miami, I think.
For which vehicle?
Um, for the, I don't know, yep, I'll read them all, as quarter.
Are you doing, Diane, or do you need to?
Um, as long as you can, can you write down so we know, something so we know, to get the, here, you want this here? Okay, so they're bidding on two vehicles, one of them is the 2001 Smith Salt Spreader, and it looks like they are bidding $650. And then the other one is the 1980 Cat 9 10 Wheel Loader, and that cost bid is $3,650.
Are they personal bids, or?
They just, this, the next bid is from Fred A. Stoichuk. Okay, we have a bid from him on the 1984 Chevy truck at $310. We have a bid on the 1988 Chevy truck at $310. And then we have a bid on the 2001 Smith Salt Spreader at $90. And then we have a bid on the 1980 Cat 9 10 Wheel Loader at $4,400.
Nice.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
The next bid is from Mike Venino, I don't know if I have the promise of correctly or not. Yes, they wanted to make sure that... Okay. We have a bid on the 1984 Chevy truck at $301. The 1988 Chevy truck at $301. The 2003 International Garbage Truck at $4,101. $4,400, $4,101. And the 1980 Cat 9-10 wheeler at $5,105. $5,001. $5,001. Okay. Okay. The next one is from Zach Hope, and the bid, he's a winner. The 1984 Chevy truck at $324. The 1988 Chevy truck at $528. The 2001 Smith Salt Spreader at $276.54. The 2003 International Garbage Truck at $2,108. And the 1980 Cat 9-10 wheeler at $1,809. The next bid we have is from Lucas Park. Lucas Park. This is for the 2003 International Garbage Truck at $3,300. And the next bid is from Brandon and Rare. The 1984 Chevy truck at $100. The 1988 Chevy truck at $100. The 2001 Smith Salt Spreader at $100. The 2003 International Garbage Truck at $2,701.01. And the 1980 Cat 9-10 wheeler at $100. So, council would need to take action on giving them...
Each one?
Yeah.
Tentatively award these making, you know, subject to review by staff. Yeah. To the parent high bidders. Yeah.
You want to make a motion for that?
I don't know.
So, the salt, yeah, salt spreader looks like Vega.
$650?
Yeah.
Yep. That's the Cat 9-10?
Yeah.
That would be beneath you.
Yeah.
Which is $5,105. Garbage truck?
Garbage truck.
That looks like...
4101.
Beneath you as well. That was 4101.
The 84 Chevy, looks like $323.
$324.
$324 Zach was his name.
And the 88 Chevy, $528.
Which was also, who's that?
Yeah. Is that everything?
The 1980 something? The 88 Chevy. I bet that was one you just said.
Yeah, that's Zach for $528.
Okay. Yep. There is the Cat 10. Yeah.
And did we get that one?
We did. That was beneath you as well.
Okay.
I hope we're pronouncing that right. Okay. We have one. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll say.
Properly made, properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's a post? Last but not least in our hearing of persons present is Robert Corbin. Hi, Mr. Corbin.
Hi. I'm having a parking problem at Chestnut Street, and I'm getting conflicting reports. Okay. One time, I was allowed to have them towed. The party involved is 717 Club. And he's a drug dealer, so he's getting favoritism from the 911. So, anyways, I was told if they parked in front of my overhead doors, I have signs posted that the vehicles would be towed by the owner's expense. I was told that I could have them towed. Now, comes around, he goes, either comes to the Borough Council or the Communication Center, and they say, no, you can't do that. I got an out-of-town attorney. I mean, there's no use in me getting a local attorney. So, got an out-of-town attorney that says they can be towed.
Okay.
He's never been to Borough Council, but I don't think that'd be a civil matter anywhere.
Yeah. I mean, it really doesn't sound like a borough matter.
Well, I saw it.
Is it on the public street or under your...
Private property. What's that? Private property or public street?
Well, the, the parking in front of my overhead doors went right on Chestnut Street.
Right. So, he's parking on a street.
The old Borough warehouse.
The old Borough warehouse.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't read it yet. Okay. I didn't know.
Yeah. The old Borough warehouse. Okay. Okay. The last time I was there in a problem, there was somebody parked in front of the overhead doors with the signs, no parking. Two puppet policemen, which you have neutered, showed up and said they wouldn't even give them, wouldn't even give them a ticket for parking in the Yacht Curve. I mean, you know, somebody's getting, you know, a little screwed here.
Okay. But this is the person I think has come to our attention.
Mr. Corbin, you've never brought to my attention. I'm the chief of police. I've never heard from you regarding this issue. If there's an issue, bring it to me. We'll deal with it. I've never heard from you.
You've never heard?
Never heard from you, no. If you bring it to me, I'll...
I called the 911 center.
Well, that's not coming directly to me.
Yeah. Well, what happened? They don't call the police. They won't have the police respond. They take that and they call the 717...
Now, we're aware of it, and the chief is aware of it. So, if you don't find any resolution, you let us know.
Well, the state police is involved now too. So, they, they're on state police.
And is there address 19 Pennebaker?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a curb cut in front of their overhead doors?
What's that?
Is there a curb cut in front of their overhead doors?
Yes.
Is there a yell on that side?
And it's yell right there, and the guy was parked right there, and two policemen would not give him a ticket because the Communication Center calls 717 Club.
Now that we're aware, we will get that taken care of, Mr. Corbin.
I pay my taxes.
Yes, you do.
Mr. Smith owes over $70,000 on his property taxes, and he's getting favoritism.
We will do our diligence for you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
If you call in and it's unresolved, you've come directly to me.
Down at the police station?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience in waiting this evening, Mr. Corbin. Okay.
Make a motion.
Wow. Okay.
Larry's hungry. I'll wait till you get back to the back.
Will you? Thank you.
I'll just dry it out.
Move it along. I get it.
I do. Fireball.
Need some more.
You don't act like that is not all American.
Hey, that's what matters, right?
You guys can go, Ben. Watch the S. D. S. man. I want to make sure it's okay for you guys.
Ben, I thought you liked it.
I have a commitment, Abby. I don't make... Don't put me on the spot.
Patch the rent, someone.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Ben, you going to have a highten? I watched that.
What's that?
I watched that.
Hey, you should, you should send that to him.
Oh, okay. 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 We had a motion to accept the consent agenda, so I guess we need a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Motion's been made properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Next, we'll begin with our treasurer's report.
Okay. So, I have two sewer exonerations we received from a, one from Rupert Raff at 11 Loggia Street, Apartment A. So, he was billed 79,000 gallons, which equals $317.25. His average consumption was 4,000 gallons, which was equal $76.25. He is asking for exoneration. He states that he had a, he had a water leak in his basement, and Mr. Faith Co's officer did go check it out. So, the difference in that is 75,000 gallons at $241.05.
Make a motion.
It was verified. Yes, it was verified. Motion's been made seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Rex?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. There's one on my agenda.
Oh, you...
Oh, there's...
I'm sorry.
807 West Sixth Street is from Deanna Briner. She was billed 369,000 gallons for an amount of $1,620.15. Her average consumption over the last four quarters has been 5,000 gallons, which equals $80.43. This was also checked with by Rex, and if the water did not go down the sewer, he verified that. And the difference of that is 364,000 gallons and the amount of $1,539.72.
Did it say verify?
Yes.
Aiden, second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Rex, you're up.
Last month, there were 40 violations or a bit more, but I was off vacation for a week.
Way to go.
But most of those were sidewalks. We're still doing some sidewalk inspections for the paving project from the upcoming years. Garbage is picking up too. It's getting a little warmer. People throwing stuff out in the yard. Zoning permits, we issued 38 this year compared to 45 last year. In sidewalks, we issued 42 this year compared to 19 last year. Zoning permits, we collected $3,516.23 this year compared to $3,116.23 last year. And sidewalks was 1,350 this year compared to 760 last year. Bringing total improvements up to the year for $948,047 of the permits.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Rex? You'll get it though. Rita?
Yeah, let me, you can excuse me for a second.
I can. Mary, you want to go ahead and give your report?
I have nothing to report.
You have nothing to report?
No.
Why, thank you for your timeliness. Chief?
Statistics for last month, Monday everything. Chief, are you talking about me or...
If I were chief, Bob.
I did. I'm sorry, Bob. Yeah. Oh, I actually went to the mayor's gig ten minutes. Yeah. I thought I was done with the fire department for the night.
I'll make it short and sweet for you, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Last month, the fire department ran 44 alarms. Reason the number's so high is a couple of weeks ago, we had the big storms. In three and a half hours' time, between the three stations, they ran 37 calls. Down wires, down trees, roofs blowing off, and everything else.
Thank you for keeping everyone safe that night.
Very welcome. We had some flooding during that, all kinds of problems. The United Fire Company took a generator up to Woods Lane and left it there for the night. We had place up there with electricity, and they had a child on breathing machine. United Fire Company took care of that for them. There was four out-of-town calls last month. Also, as I touched on a little bit ago, we're doing this cross-department training that had started in the past month. There's about 16-hour road rescue class. And last week, as Ryan stayed in the rough waters, they were out on 16-hour boat rescue class. So, they are, they are doing their job. And a reminder, May the 26th, the day, Sunday before Memorial Day, we'll be doing our memorial services to go around the cemeteries for the guys that's killed in line of duty. All three stations participated in the kid connection. And also today, we appointed Sean Markley to fill the open position of Assistant Fire Chief. Sean met all of his qualifications. He has over 20 years in Lewis Town Fire Department. He's been a... He's been a fire officer down at United, several times, he's been a captain, lieutenant. And I know Sean will do a good job for us, the mayor just wore him in tonight. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Now onto you, Mr. Fleming.
Okay, statistics for the month of April, we had six hundred and thirty-one calls of service. The officers were at a hundred and one traffic citations, sixteen non-traffic. There were nine hundred and fifty-five meter tickets issued, forty-five other parking tickets, per total one thousand and three hundred and thirty-nine streets with their maintenance tickets issued. Statistics for here.
You and the mayor expressed my appreciation, though, for doing the job, they're doing on the streets with the tickets.
You feel it, okay? I'll pass that on, I'm sure they'll appreciate it.
Thanks Eddie, because I got one too. Eric, what we got this year so far? Your majority was a swamp, I for one appreciate it.
Otherwise, in the department, we completed our civil service testing. In fact, we'll probably talk about that in executive session later. And also did intern interviews, completed the process for them, and we'll talk about that as well in the next session. That's about all I have for today.
Any questions for the chief? Laura's not here, but I was at rec board and there was no quorum, so anything that they discussed or needed to prove was put on the consent agenda. Next, we have Mr. Redd.
Advertised and you have before you for consideration for adoption, an ordinance to authorize the recovery of response fees by the Lewis Town Fire Department through its three companies. These are for.
We don't have that. It's not before us.
I don't even have a copy of it.
I thought it was part of the package. This was discussed last month at FERC Council. What it is, is this is a ordinance that allows the fire departments to recover fees for materials, equipment, personnel, hours, hazardous abatement materials for motor vehicle accidents. That's what it's geared towards.
Mark, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't think we should take any action on this tonight until everybody has a chance to.
I haven't even.
We're talking about them, that's all he's talking about.
Yeah, why don't we, we'll pass out some copies of it, because otherwise, we're gonna have to re-advertise it if you don't consider it tonight.
They've already advertised, is that what you're saying?
It's already advertised.
Yeah, we did that last month.
Yeah, that was last month.
Yeah. We'll get, we'll get y'all copies of it, you just, we'll come back to this then later in the meeting.
While we're on that subject, though, I was under the impression in the beginning, when we discussed this at fire committee and in all of the ordinance, I believe, that there was no real legal route to this recovery.
There isn't.
Now, this is.
My understanding was they weren't gonna force anybody to pay the bill if the insurance company didn't cover.
Correct, that was my understanding.
Because they're gonna do the whole due process, where they're gonna, they're gonna invoice the insurance company or anything like that, and it's just basically, they're just trying to recoup whatever they can, or they pay the fee, but they don't get them.
Right, they have to have a third party to do that, correct, yeah.
Well, this is.
They can get a third party.
This is saying fees in charge may be collected directly by the fire department in Lewis Town, through its three volunteer nonprofit fire companies by a civil action filed with the magistrate, district magistrate, or by an action in law or equity, or court of common pleas in the county of Pennsylvania, or any other court of competent jurisdiction.
That's the people who didn't pay.
Yeah, the people, my understanding was that if you didn't have insurance to cover this, then you didn't need to worry about that bill.
That's my understanding too.
Well, that's, yeah, that's not the way it's really being presented, because.
That was the way that Bob presented it. Correct, Bob?
Well, no, what was? What happened is they brought Brown Township's ordinance and said they want an ordinance like Brown Township's ordinance. So what we have is an ordinance like Brown Township's ordinance.
Yes, that's those Brown Townships back here on the hillside?
Yeah, we, all we do is send it through a billing company. But we have agreed with the billing company that we will only bill the insurance company once and then a second time. And after the second time, it's thrown void. We've had some insurance company call and say, okay, how much did you use? We're like, oh, we used two bags of oil dry and. They're like, okay, well, how much is oil dry, like ten dollars, and then you get, sends a check for twenty bucks.
But do you have it in your ordinance that?
That's a thing.
You sent it to a magistrate?
Yes.
Well, it might be insurance, we don't send it here. With our, the insurance company themselves have asked, how far do we push this? We've said you bill their insurance up to twice and then you stop at that point. We don't seek anything through a magistrate, we don't go through court, we don't bill the individuals themselves.
I definitely won't vote for that with it in the ordinance. I'm fine with that, that's how we previously discussed this. That's the way it should be written.
Yeah, if we put.
I mean, this coffee and paste thing is getting, has caught up to us more than once right now.
Well, that was presented as a reference, Brown Township.
And there's, I mean, there are several levels of billing you can do, like you can bill per broom, per bag of oil dry, per piece of apparatus, per van. We've made two, we have a BLS accident and an ALS, which, the ALS side of an accident is when we use our hydraulic rescue tools. We submit one fee for that, we submit one for when we don't, if we use this general, you know, mitigative stuff for hazardous materials and all that. So we have a, we have a two-part fee schedule, ALS and BLS, that's it.
And then that billing company that you use, or the third party, or second party in this case, agency, they're not doing collection agencies, they're not.
No.
Right, okay, see, that's how we understood.
That's not how your ordinance is written.
Right. See, this is, this is how this was presented, that you wanted an ordinance like Brown Township has. So that's how it's drafted.
I think everybody needs to get a copy of that.
No one's gonna vote for it like this.
We need to get a copy of that.
But now, and bring up the change, you have to re-advertise that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Maybe we'll get everybody copies of it, have them, you know, have them available to look at.
Just saying.
Everybody.
Well, Mark, this is how it was presented.
Hey, I'm not questioning, you're exactly right. You're exactly right.
We'll just get it done. Okay, did you have anything else, Mark? Okay. First secretary? What do we have?
So, well, I have a couple things I can go over, is what he has on here. So, we did receive a letter from the Senate congratulating us on receiving the community planning award at the nineteenth annual Mifflin County Planning Dinner.
That's a good thing.
Yes. And then the next one is the approval to award Fish Street Project to Hall Bakers. I believe Lucas is here and he could go over what is going on with that.
Yep, we had opened up bids here a few weeks ago at the finance committee. I gave everybody a copy of the report. Venus has a full-bound copy with the bids from the two contractors, everybody else has in front of them, pretty much the summary with all their pricing. We saved on another fifty pages in there with everybody's bids. We received bids from Glen Hall Baker Incorporated and Jay Fulker and Sons Incorporated. Hall Baker's bid was four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The Fulker and Sons bid came in at five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. We had available six or seven hundred thousand dollars for the project, so for the bids to come in at four forty-seven, we were very happy. That's gonna allow us to do a lot of really good things there in Kiss Street. With that being said, we are asking that the borough award the project to Glen Hall Baker. We will execute the notice of award. They will return some additional bond documentation, which we will verify here in the next two weeks. And as soon as that information has been verified, we will enter into the standard agreement with them that was in our plans and specs. And we will give them the notice to proceed for Monday, June tenth, which is the Monday after graduation. So the plan is for them to get in there and get started on June tenth. The school district is also working on the opposite side of Kiss Street in front of LIS to do a bus, a road widening on their side for a bus pull-off. So that'll be done in conjunction, I believe G N R Charles was a little better there. Everyone will have their work done by the second week of August, we will pave the third week and school will be in session on, I believe, Thursday the twenty-second, so.
Start date till June the first?
June tenth. With, with graduation pushing through the first week of June, yep.
Make a motion, we'll, we're the bid dog.
That's no matter to me, whatever she puts down. Aiden, seconded, discussion?
Okay, so where's those monies coming from? I mean, is that, is that C D B D money or?
No, that was the D C D multimodal grant for three hundred and forty thousand. Geisinger provided the one fifty for a partial match, the borough will make up the difference. We originally allocated two-ten out of, out of the different pots. But with the bids coming in at four forty-seven, we're just gonna reallocate some money and hopefully reduce the borough share considerably. But that'll take it from the bridge there, the Dorcas Street Bridge, the whole way into Fleming, right there at the tennis court, all new curb ramps, road widening. We're actually gonna mill the entire street off, get rid of all the busted up pavement, some storm improvements, it'll be really nice once all's said and done, so.
And it'll be done before school starts?
That's the plan.
That's what everyone likes to hear.
Yep, thank you guys.
Okay, so we had a motion, seconded, discussion, any questions? All those in favor of awarding the bid to Hall Bakers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So, the next thing we have on there is, I'm assuming this, we received appraisal, three hundred and fifty dollars for six seventy-two Valley Street from Tom Howler from Volkeye. And assuming that we just want to get council's authorization to do that appraisal for that price. Three hundred and fifty dollars, I don't know if anything else looked at, I don't.
Wait, what's this?
Appraise the properties up on Valley Street, that property.
The six seventy-two and six seventy-four?
Yes, first to sell it.
Well, this just says six seventy-two, I don't know if it includes six seventy-four, it wasn't pretty good information, so I'm not sure. No, it just says six seventy-two right there, so I'm not sure. Six seventy-four also or not.
We need to get an appraisal.
Well, we would, to sell a fair market value, Scott and I would've gotten that together. Actually, this. This only says six seventy-two, so I'm not.
That was it or what?
I don't know.
I agree with Larry, like, the appraisal before you can sell it, you can offer for it. Yeah, there's only way to offer for it, I don't know. I don't think you're.
I don't think you're gonna have too many pieces in there right off of that.
Okay, I guess we'll table that.
Maybe get something, put on the agenda for next month.
Then, I'm not sure, does anybody else know what the recommendation is?
There is, there are two bids for rented properties within the borough. And they were for, it looks like eighteen to twenty Cheston Street and twenty-two to twenty-four Cheston Street. Tear down and remove houses. I don't know where this came from.
Yeah, this wasn't even discussed.
Who wrote that?
I think this was something that the commissioners had had for the next set of properties to do after the Valley Street. So we'll have to get more information on that as well.
Maybe it's like maybe the last time, they're, like you said, looking at properties and you're seeing our feedback on.
Wow, I think this is just some estimates there, didn't say to award it or anything like that on our agenda, it was just information, is what I gather.
And then for number five, I'm gonna let Lucas talk about this, it says the Borough Hall changes, is Lucas still here?
Yes.
And, you know, I know Scott has been talking to you directly, so.
Yep, we have been working with Rex and the borough staff at doing some minor security upgrades at the different administration desks, those that handle the money. We had looked down at the refuse department to add a, an interior wall, once you go through the refuse store, rather than having direct access over the desk and around the desk to the two girls handling a lot of money on certain days of the month. We had looked at creating a vestibule area with two ticket windows per se, two deposit windows. That way, they would have some separation from the public when, when they're handing in money. So we had put together some building permit drawings for those improvements. Additionally, over at the code office, we were looking at just reworking the old teller window that's there, it's pretty small and there's a countertop and things. So we had worked with Rex and Stacy there to come up with an idea, just to sort of replace that, reconfigure the counter space there. And then additionally, with folks being able to come up the steps, we were looking at a type of a key card or a push button here at the top of the stairs to maybe secure the second floor and separate that from, from the first floor. With it obviously being open during the day and at different times, whenever, whenever they're expecting visitors and things. They had asked, or Scott had asked, that we come here tonight, we do have the building permit drawings pretty much pulled together, had reviewed everything with Rex, just to get authorization to move forward with that. But I don't know where that had been last, I know we talked about it to one finance committee and revisited some of those items.
Well, just, just to comment on that, I mean, this has all amazed me in terms of that, what I said in the finance committee was that you were to come to us with a recommendation in terms of getting this different office sit caused. Because I, I felt we didn't need a complete remodel of the offices. And now it's, there's other things, it's been going all with permits and again, that should have not transpired.
And this was, well, quite frankly, this was, the borough manager has you here tonight, and he knew that you were to come back to finance committee with the options that we had discussed in finance committee. And again, quite frankly, that's part of the reason we had to make the decision we made tonight.
Understood. Yeah, so, I mean, I need to come back to finance as it stays in finance.
Very good.
I mean, but again, Lucas, we completely understand it.
Yep.
Understood, thank you guys.
Yep, thank you.
I mean, probably number six too, that should go back to finance, concerning the location of the police barracks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, next, we have unfinished and new business, and you're up, Mr. Wilson.
Looking for approval to remove handicap spaces at five oh nine Valley and one twenty-one North Fran Street.
Make a motion. Check everything out, all this well, then one guy died and the other lady moved.
Motion made, properly seconded, discussion? All those in favor of removal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And, on thirty-nine and forty-one Logan Street, looking to put in two handicap spaces. And I did go and talk with them.
Was there's two women side by side?
I don't think there were handicap spaces there, though.
Thought there was one in the front.
One down the street.
Down the street, okay.
They don't have any parking in the rear. They do, but it's like a mile away.
Too far for these women.
They can't, they can't walk that far.
Properly made, seconded, discussion? Probably made second, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I don't know what that one is from Walnut Street, I have no idea. Sign request.
That was the one I emailed about. You didn't get the email?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Um, we can take that back up to streets then, at the streets committee, wanna just discuss that.
What's for sign or a request?
They said it was about, um, at 110 North Bullon Street, um, they said to leave my apartment, I must go through the alley onto Cather Street. There's no parking for about 20 to 25 feet, although these are plain to view. The neighbors on the east is still parking directly along illegally. There are parking strips. I'd like to request a sign put there, please call when we receive this letter inside. Um, it just kinda says about, um, what, no park, they're parking there illegally? Is there parking strips?
Is there legally parked?
It sounds like something we need to check out.
Yeah, turn it over.
We'll send that to the streets.
Check that out.
Uh, and, I don't know, I guess the matter we discussed about Junianna Street, we'll have to check with Rex on that.
Who, did we talk to Plank about that?
We didn't talk to anybody. We can make that happen before streets committee. If you want, I can assign myself that duty bill.
Well, I thought we did talk to him, but I don't remember that part.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Well, we did talk to Plank, I'm sorry, yes, but, and he agreed that something was wrong with that, but we don't know whose responsibility it was, that's what we're trying to figure out.
The problem with that is it was so far back, it was like 97.
Well, we'll see what we can dig up, and I can bring that to streets committee. Okay, anything else, Bill?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Okay, so what I just passed around here is at this point purely suggestion. Um, it was brought to us in law and ordinance, but I guess a lot of people in the community feel that, well, let me back up. The process at this point, you get a year ticket, you're either expired, you get a ticket on your windshield, however it was. You have, what is it, technically it's five days, but we do give 10 or seven days. It's seven, it's right on the envelope, seven days. And I know that, it's my understanding, the staff has been pretty lenient on that number to begin with.
Let it go 14 days.
Well, people have an issue with or have, well, I guess, that the next, the very next step is taking it to the magistrate. So, my suggestion.
But from the seven, from the seven days and a meal, you go to the magistrate after seven days?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we've been given 14.
But you could.
Technically, you could, but we are mainly.
Two weeks that you give.
Yeah, like I said, the borough staff's been very lenient, very understanding of you, you know, it's not the. So, and I just kinda made a real elementary, colorful picture. So, the suggestion is tickets issued 14 days from that date, we then send them a letter. That ticket then turns into $20. So, at that point in time, it would be payable to the borough, just like the regular parking ticket would be to begin with. From that notice, 14 more days, so 14 days from the date of that notice, it then goes to the magistrate. So, essentially, a person would have 28 days to pay a parking ticket before it would be in the court system.
But if it goes to the magistrate, we only get five?
Correct.
Yeah, regardless, the borough doesn't benefit from going to magistrate. We will only get the amount of the ticket.
But is that actually true, Mark? If we pass an ordinance that your second notice was $20, would we still only get the original five with the magistrate, or would we then get the 20?
Wouldn't go to the magistrate if that's the case, you would still get, you'd get the $20.
Right, I mean, if they paid it, you would get the whole $20.
No, I mean.
Are you saying if they don't pay, you go to magistrate and act with the?
You would have to change your fine, I guess. I mean, because they're only gonna, magistrate's only gonna award whatever fine that an actor you would notice.
So, yeah, you change it to 20, we're only ever gonna get the 20.
Is that in the ordinance that costs?
It's five.
Yeah, which the original ticket, it's still be five.
So, the ordinance? So, what's the ordinance? What kind of watch?
What everybody's thoughts are. My thoughts are, Dave, I wasn't asking my input on this before it was out there, but, it's gonna create a lot more work for our administrative staff down there. One thing, not just anybody can have access to Penn dot information, so the only way to determine who that ticket belongs to is to run the plate, get Penn dot information. That's how the notices would have to be sent out. So, and the people that can have access to that would be people in the police department or the ticket enforcement, the parking enforcement person, so you're gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna lose money on that.
We're gonna wrap up a lot of their time.
Not really, we kinda had a solution to that, too.
The, uh, what's the solution to that? Well, it is a solution, but it was just something I mentioned for discussion already to try to discuss this meeting. The, uh, we have a part-time here person now, and is it feasible for them to do this paperwork on their normally scheduled Saturday and not do the meter enforcement on that Saturday?
Oh, they can, I mean, if you're giving up time, they could be issuing tickets for administrative.
Well, and that's another, I mean, that's, that's what we have to consider, what, which is what's more important, enforcement or? Which is a whole nother thing that this, come along with this, but I was kinda trying to do a piece.
I like, like revenue is currently bringing down.
It's projected to bring in $75,000. That's the projection.
It does, borough sends a lot of that over expenses and costs.
Correct.
The other.
The other issue is.
Yeah, the other complaint was enforcement on Saturdays, because even in previous years when we had meter enforcement, they didn't work on those Saturdays. People still fed the meter and they technically still, I'm still gonna feed the meter, so we need, but.
I think I mentioned that.
Right.
I mean, and that's something council can change.
Well, here's the other issue, not only do people downtown on Saturdays, but as y'all know, I live downtown and left the other morning, and there are people who live on Wayne Street, North Wayne, on Third Street, who are residents, that are getting tickets at 9:00 a.m.
On Saturdays.
On Saturdays. You know, at a time when most of us are probably still having our coffee and watching the news or whatever.
And meters are tagged. They're.
Yeah, five Saturdays. I understand, and if you don't want Saturday enforcement, that's fine, then, you know, it should be changed, but, you know, if she is working and enforcing, she has to do it equally for everybody, and we can't pick and choose.
Absolutely, but that's not even.
Right.
Either we want it or we don't, and that's up to you, you know, you guys have to decide that.
I mean, at this point, I think maybe, you know, it's kinda out there on the table, everyone can think about it, and, I mean.
I, Saturday enforcement's to me are a little much.
Well, I mean, for me, it brings a lot to the table, too, like, do we need all these meters in certain areas, as I say?
I'd like to see them all go.
You know, we need to explore that as well.
I think you need to bring Scott Brothers, and he had a discussion with him about the meter, the meterhead the other day, which is very good, he has a good thought, but the person, fine, you need to use all the time, meterhead all the time, but I think you need to talk to him a little bit. I think he ought to hear his thoughts.
Oh, then can you, can you give us his information and we can talk to him about that?
He's got a law and ordinance.
That a law and ordinance, yeah, absolutely.
I think he ought to hear him out.
And that's great, but I think we still need to make a decision on what we're gonna do, if we're gonna make any changes to the ticketing process and to Saturday enforcement.
Well, I'd say at least not even forced Saturday, you agree?
I agree.
And, and that is the other side of this, in which actually it was the previous borough manager that said, well, it's not, because that was my initial suggestion, was the meter enforcement officer would be able to do the added paperwork, just, I mean, obviously it saves time, say, whoever had on a full-time borough employee, and the previous manager essentially said, oh, it's no big deal, it's.
If you would see the number of tickets that are being written, the number that last year.
But is that something that Teresa could accomplish on a Saturday?
With the number of tickets she's writing, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I guess the concern was we didn't want to see any hours taken from her, per se.
She got her daughter's job. We also have, you know, clerk secretaries everywhere in the borough that already have a pile of.
Right, and like I said, not everybody can have access to Penn dot information, so that would restrict it just to Becca and Terry, and so that puts more on them to handle all that process.
Let's say, and I don't think we're going to tonight, obviously, like everyone needs something about, let's say we wanted to move forward with something like this, what would your solution be in terms of the paperwork side, what you have?
I don't have a solution for it right now, I'm just saying, I know it put a lot more burden on to Becca and Terry, and we'd have to look, I know last year, I think Becca looked it up, there were 585 that went to citation, so that's 585 letters, and somebody would have to write, you know, and then keep track of them, who paid, who didn't pay, you know, I mean, it just created an administrative nightmare for whoever has to keep track of it. And, you know, for a $5 ticket, are you really, is it really worth it, if paying an employee several hours to deal with a $5 ticket?
So, I'm kinda hearing you say, do away with the meters.
Okay, that's not a good answer, but.
Look, I'm just a fine interpretation aid.
But if you're going, if you're going to do it, you have to do the fishing, it makes sense. Part of the, I mean, that space, part of the reason we do it is for revenue.
Right, and if it's.
If it's not working, why do it?
The revenue versus the expenses isn't worth it yet.
So, well, the real reason you're doing downtown business district is so.
So, they avoid.
There's turnover.
So, turnover, exactly.
Yes, Lucas?
Which I actually see as the biggest issue in parking in the borough. You have borough parking lots, you have annual permits to park in those borough parking lots, yet many of our businesses park the streets full, including the end of Market Street, and there's quite a few other ones around that you see, the 12-hour meters were put in, then they were never intended to be that way, and what came first, the chicken or the egg, the loss of the parking space in front of the business or the loss of business that required those parking spaces?
So, that's one of the things, given Scott Brothers has some insight on that.
Exactly, Scott Brothers, like, he has a good idea.
Just how the meters got changed where they're at, and this should be.
Okay, Volke, so either it's a law or just.
So, that's the rest of it?
Yeah. So, this is. Okay, so, um, the other one was the speed limit sign, Dave, do you have that? Uh, and that was the speed limit on West Fourth Street from Ratten Avenue and North Fran Street, where Bill.
To run speed, we would have no signs.
Well, I thought that there was just kind of a work order issued in that meeting that he was gonna place.
Yeah, I think we needed approval for that.
We had to prove it.
I think, how about Penn Dot?
Yeah, we have a good Penn Dot. Penn Dot Highway. Well, I mean, they have.
And it'll be on Fourth Street.
It's a borough.
Up on Magistrate Street.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're talking about the pure one that.
Do you know, Lucas?
About 22.
Well, it would come down to what existing ordinance is in place in the borough that established the speed limit.
Right, we just need to, there's no sign there to tell people what the season is, so we just need to have a sign there so that they can enforce it.
They have the line, but there's no signs, if they're found, they can still enforce it without, but we don't want a problem.
Or we still.
We need signs.
Someone mentioned about Sunset Road, they don't have it either, signs down.
If it's residential, you technically have to have it, it's 25.
Right.
And there is a sign coming down Fourth Street, going from 35 to 25, and West Fourth is basically an extension of that.
Right.
So, technically by the law, it's okay, but we wanted it there just in case somebody's turning onto another street, so they can't say, well, it's just getting over. Yeah, and it is a residential area, so it should be 25 anyway.
I was gonna say, it's a sense of being a residential.
Yeah, it's 25. I think we're okay, technically within the law, but we just wanted it as an extra measure, so.
I make a motion to put speed signs up. 95 miles an hour.
I'll second the motion for discussion, but Mark, so now knowing all of this, you're good?
I think we looked it up last month, and the resolution was that the streets guys were going to put up a sign.
That's what we thought, too, but maybe we see no perfect.
Yeah, I thought it was already approved.
Can I also do Sunset Road? Because I got complaints about the reason that it's a.
Where's Sunset Road?
Which one is that? That must be a little made down the end of town.
Oh, oh, okay.
Did somebody request that?
It says like a drag strip down there. We go down around, or police go down around.
I get down in that tree every day.
Yeah, that's, well, can we look into that one?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay.
That would be one reality behind lakes.
That is one reality behind my house.
Okay, let's just move on.
Okay, now, public comments.
Wait, there's a first and a second for that motion.
Oh, did we not, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, first and second discussion, that's right, four discussions, he said. All those in favor of placing a speed limit sign on West Fourth Street? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you for catching that. Now, public comments. Yes?
I'm hungry.
Guess what, you're gonna be free to leave, and we're gonna go to another executive session, so.
I'm not burning you anything back.
I'm good, I ate before I came. I heard it was gonna be a long one.
Do you think we need to, like, actually?
We can talk about it in turn and then something.
Next time, just order pizza for everybody.
That would be great, Perry. I like pepperoni.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, we want to check for session?
We are.
All right.